Good evening, welcome to the twentieth meeting of the year, the last one. Today is December ninth, twenty twenty four. Alyssa, can you please read the publications?
In compliance with chapter two thirty-one of Public Law nineteen seventy-five, notice of this meeting to the health of the Criminal Justice Building, sixty-one Main Street, South River, has been published in the Home News Tribune on January fifth, twenty twenty-four, posted on the municipal building bulletin board of the borough website and front door of the Criminal Justice Building at sixty-one Main Street, South River.
You will call?
Mayor Giddy?
Here.
Councilman Ballas?
Here.
Councilman Seula?
Here.
Councilman DeSantis?
Here.
Councilman DeZemian?
Here.
Councilman Grchensky?
Here.
And Councilperson Prinzel not here.
Stand for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be standing for a moment of silence. You may be seated. We do have a swearing in of a new chief.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor, members of Borough Council and residents of that area. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight and for allowing us to hold this ceremony in front of the presence of family, friends, and the residents of the borough. This evening, I am honored to recommend Michael Manharry for a position of probationary police officer with the South River Police Department. Before proceeding, I'd like to share a little background about Michael. Boy, I am confident he will be an excellent addition to our team. Just last Thursday, Michael graduated from Atlantic County Police Academy as an alternate route recruit. For those unfamiliar, the alternate route program has been in existence for many years and provides an opportunity for individuals aspiring to become police officers to attend a certified police training academy at their own expense without being employed by a law enforcement agency. These recruits receive no tag or benefits during their training, which highlights their perseverance, dedication, commitment to achieving their dream to serve the community. This program has produced many outstanding officers for the South River Police Department, including retired Sergeant Edna Avalon, Officer Palmasinski, and Detective Patrick Mole. Michael has been a lifelong resident of nearby Monroe Township and a proud graduate of Monroe High School. In June of this year, Deputy Chief Thomas Kenna and I had the privilege of interviewing several alternate route recruits at the Atlantic County Police Academy where we first met Michael. From that moment, it was clear he possessed qualities we look for in an officer that embodies the values and professionalism that we hold dear in the South River Police Department. His dedication to demanding alternate route program, combined with deep ties to the community, demonstrates his passion and willingness to serve. On behalf of Deputy Chief McKenna and myself, it is a great privilege to recommend Michael Manharry for a position of probationary police officer. Thank you.
All right, I.
I.
Say your name.
Michael Manharry.
Do some ways where?
Do some ways where.
I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
I will bear true faith.
I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same and to.
To the same and to.
The government's established.
The government's established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
In this end the state.
In the state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of.
Borough South River Police Officer.
Borough South River Police Officer.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Not Michael's father, we practice this outside. Try to pin this badge on his shirt. Okay, Mayor, thank you for having the ceremony. Just to put it in perspective, while I was just talking to Michael before, Michael will be here for the next thirty years, so he's not retiring. Right? So at least he's. All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna go into agenda session. Uh, we do have four ordinances for second meeting, which is why we do have the on-attention notice. Park of Joe.
Yes. So every year, the borough goes after annual van sale. Uh, this year, the van sale was ten million eight hundred and forty-three thousand. Uh, we got an interest rate of three point oh six, which is excellent. So when Bob Council did the rate, they said it's one of the best they've seen in the last month or two, so. Um, it was very good. We also received a premium of eighty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-six dollars, so. Um, this is just required from statute that this is actually discussed in council meetings, so. So this is the annual sale we do every single year. It covers all the water, electric, and, you know, capital, which is what we do.
And here, uh, like I said, there's four of them. Uh, the one I will be, uh, talking about is the twenty twenty-four forty-eight, which is the grades on police. We are going to be pulling this, uh, we are going to be, uh, working out a couple of things on it. Uh, can you talk about the other three?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, twenty twenty-four forty-six, that's the ordinance that's consolidating the land use boards. Uh, twenty twenty-four forty-seven, that's the ordinance that's for advising the fire committee, uh, the building manager, and then twenty twenty-four forty-nine, that's the redevelopment for twenty-five Main Street. On this one, uh, Borough administration is actually asking that, uh, the council not take any action on this as we're still working out the details of the redeveloper, um, along with asking to not take action on this ordinance. We're going to be calling resolution authorizing the redevelopment agreement. We hopefully will get back to it in a year.
Alyssa, can we move on to, uh, second reading, twenty twenty-four forty-six?
Ordinance twenty twenty-four forty-six, ordinance of the Borough South River, County Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough South River, so as to amend chapter fifty entitled Land Use Procedures.
Think of motion by full reading.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Seula, seconded by Councilwoman Ballas.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now we're moving on to, uh, public hearing. Ten minutes. Say your name, address.
Robert Bodak, United Cleveland Avenue, South River. Um, Lady Endalman, in my twenty years on the board, I worked with some of the finest individuals and cast people around. Frank de Monaco, John Scala, Donna Baron, Tommy Sayula, Bartlandeski, John Cross, Nick Panopoulos are just a few of these great people that were there. The zoning board was never political. Everyone had the equal opportunity to speak regardless of the party you belonged to. Frank de Monaco, our chairman emeritus, has still known us one thing, to be fair, to be polite, be respectful of everybody who came before us. Even if the applicant did something wrong or against the Borough Code, they still should be treated with respect. It was said one of the reasons the boards were dismissed is because there are individuals on the boards giving applicants and developers a hard time. It's better to start new than to deal with them. Well, different opinions are always good. They're always good to have them amongst people so you can get their root cause or the real problem sometimes. And as long as it's respectful and people are treated with respect, it should be allowed. I can assure you that every applicant that ever came before the zoning board was treated with respect. It was also said that frequently we had to cancel meetings due to lack of a forum. In my twenty years on the board, we only canceled one meeting was because of COVID. No regular scheduled meetings were ever canceled. And, um, Canada at the time, the town did not have a Zoom set up, so we had to cancel that one meeting. That's the only one in all that time. But again, there was articles, people saying that one of the reasons the board is going is because we couldn't quit forum, we couldn't do things. And that's the furthest thing from the truth. There was an article in the paper saying the consolidation would provide one-stop shopping, you prevent the delays that you're having because applications are given to the wrong board. There was only one application given to the wrong board in all my time, and it wasn't to the wrong board. We were given the application for Lincoln School, and then they decided that it was too extensive of a project, and they moved that one over to the planning board. That was the only one. Our professionals are the people that determine which board it goes to. It wasn't our secretary, it wasn't ourselves, it was our professionals, they made that. Lastly, there was a comment that many people have spoken and wanted this. Well, I don't know if that's really true. Only forty-five hundred of the seven thousand people that voted actually voted in one way or another for this ordinance. And a lot of them questioned us as the voting people working in the voting booths, what this is all about. We could not say anything, we did not say anything. We just said, you have to read what's up over there. And a lot of them said, well, I don't think it's a good idea, or, well, what, you know, I'm just not gonna vote, and a lot of people didn't vote. So to say that the people of South River spoke their minds, that this is what they wanted, I think is wrong. I know the decision's already made, and I'm aware to counsel. Not everybody at a council is in favor of it, but they're gonna stick together, and, look, that's okay. But the zoning board is a great group of individuals, and it all works a life. I mean, you had people coming back early from Pennsylvania, from their jobs, and people leaving vacation and come back to a zoning board meeting because they wanted to do their best to help out the citizens of South River. If you work for a company and you were downsized, and you people were let go, you had to do something, you would meet with these people, you'd explain to them, tell them why you're downsizing, why you're getting away from these boards. Meet them at a meeting. No one from the DS had the courtesy to sit down and account at one of our meetings, whether it be the zoning board, you know, or, I don't know about the planning board, but no one came and said, hey, this is what the future is, this is what we want to do. And I think that was wrong. I really think that's something that should have been done, so at least you could have let these great people who did so much for so many years know, you know, why and what the future is and why it is what it is, instead of just hearing the comments that we did a lot of things wrong. So I'm sure you guys have ideas and how you wanna make everything great, and, um, I'm sure it's gonna work out well. But the only thing I would ask you, if you could, the people that are getting downsized, the people that are getting off these boards now and not gonna be on it anymore, did a lot of good for the people of South River. And I think the council and the mayor, you should do something for those people, at least thank those board members. Give them a pro- little thanking certificate, do something to say, hey, look, you guys put in a lot of time. We're sorry, we don't have enough seats on the board, you may have been, but do something to thank these people for what they did because they put in a lot of time and a lot of hours. And just to get told while you're gone and no one come to say why, um, I think is wrong. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public? First of all, I have a question, if that's appropriate. Is it for this ordinance?
It's just about the land use.
Okay.
It's just about the land use board. Is that what you're questioning?
The question is, uh, is the ordinance change? They're not asking that.
Okay, we're voting on the ordinance for the land use board.
Should I be the vote?
Excuse me?
It's nice to be the vote.
No, this is only for the council. Oh, sorry? This is only for the council, sorry.
I see.
No more questions. Anyone else in the public?
Uh, for me, Mayor, council members, drove the nodle from thirty daily streets, South River here. Um, I understand where the gentleman is heading from with the publication of the zoning board and the planning board into a land use board. Um, I could never find anything that said these two boards were not functioning optimally, and there seems to be any problems. As far as applicant, 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 ooh, boy, my throat's still bothering me today. As far as applications go, the applicants, ninety-nine point nine-nine percent of the time, knew which board they needed to be in front of. Those are occasions when they made a mistake and had to shift it over to the middle board, yeah, but it was, it's a delay and it's unfortunate. Most of the delays, though, in any application is not due to the planning board or the zoning board or the county board, uh, planning board. It's usually due to the applicant's representatives themselves. This I know because I've been personally involved in it for many years on the county level. So for whatever reasons, it was voted, it was decided that this is gonna, the way it's gonna be. Unfortunately, we're taking, uh, opportunities for the borough residents to participate in the functions of the municipalities. Very sad because even in the report that was done about the town, it encouraged more involvement opportunities for the residents. So it's a shame that this is happening in that vein alone, besides, uh, like I say, I don't see the reasoning other than it's maybe the modern thing to do, the end thing to do, what have you. But I'm gonna be interested to see how well it functions because as I spoke to Mayor earlier in the one-minute meeting, all the functions are gonna be the same as if there was a zoning board or a planning board. So it's only gonna be one board now, so they're gonna have to still meet the same requirements. Streamlining it, not a bad idea, however, like I said, the delays are not with the boards, they're with the applicants ninety-nine point nine-nine percent of the time. So, uh, I do feel bad for the people who are losing their positions. I was going to be on the planning board, or, yeah, I was planning board many years ago, but since I'm an employee of the county, it's not considered a good idea because I couldn't make any judgments on any applications that involve the county road facility. So I, I got backed down. But in any case, I just wanted to let you know that I understand what the gentleman is saying, I agree with him. Um, not necessarily pleased that it was done, but it's done. So we work with what we've got, and hopefully things will go smooth in the future and we don't run into too many bumps in the way. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Do we may know, one eighty-nine Main Street? I asked this at the last meeting, I know we mentioned, if this gets passed today, uh, would you already have the people you are going to appoint? You said yes.
Hasn't been decided upon, Councilman.
Okay. If it's voted yes today, and this is effective January first, when will you be appointing your new members?
First meeting in general.
Okay. Um, I agree, as most people have said, with consolidation, um. You guys, a few months back, have always been claiming that there's not enough volunteers. I don't think we ask enough people if they wanna volunteer for our commissions, our boards. Uh, we had a human relations commission, which kind of tried to consolidate with people, but like a heritage commission. We have people out there that want to keep us in town, and we continue to say that there's not enough people out there. Um, as the ordinance is written, only the mayor gets to decide from each member of the land use board?
According to the ordinance, but I'm gonna share with the rest of the council.
So according to the ordinance, you get to make the decision, or he gets on board?
Right, I'm here to the council to make that decision, to help me and move, move the board to be appointed.
Okay. Nothing else, thank you.
Anyone else from the public? First call. Second call.
Motion to close the public?
I'll be getting.
Thank you. Can I just mention what we're here for? It's about getting subdivision, um, a little obitae, and, uh.
No, I mean, this is, wait till your public hearing, I'll call you, I'll call you up soon. Thank you.
Oh, okay, okay. Thanks.
Uh, motion, uh, to close was, uh, Councilman Seula, seconded by Councilwoman Ballas.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the council that's, uh, have a discussion? Anyone? So, I said this in the last meeting, I said this in quite a few meetings. You're taking a planning board and a zoning board, you're consolidating it, you are doing what you call a one-stop shop. You are streamlining the actual applicant to come to a board and not only be heard for completeness, but also be heard for a public hearing, all in one board. You're helping that applicant, whoever that is, whether it's a homeowner, a developer, a construction worker, whoever wants to actually do something to improve their, uh, environment. They'll be able to save on a lot of escrow fees. That's what I mean by consolidate. Now, I could, which I'm not, I could simply start a whole new board. It's not fair to the planning board and it sure isn't fair to the zoning board because both boards have been doing great for the last past, as long as I can remember. So as far as the two boards are, uh, involved, both boards will be consolidated based on our decision on how we're going to look at the board members. So yes, you actually look at the board members today, there's quite a few that actually could consolidate and make an actual board. But that said, do I have a motion?
Take a motion to approve the twenty twenty-four dash forty-six.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Seula, seconded by Councilwoman Ballas.
Councilman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Seula?
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis?
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Grchensky?
Yes. Thank you. Now we're gonna move to the twenty twenty-four forty-seven.
Notice twenty twenty-four forty-seven, the ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River, so as to amend chapter seventy-two entitled Public Safety Department Act.
Move away. Full reading.
So then by Councilwoman Ballas, seconded by Councilman Grchensky.
All in favor?
Aye. I'd like to open this up to the public. Williams, do that twenty twenty-four, South River. Question for you is about the fire committee building manager. Right now, it's written that fire committee is composed of presidents and vice presidents of each individual company. Will this group not be answered entirely specific, different organization when they say they're applying to the fire chief before it goes to mayor and council board, to the public safety committee? And also, would it be better to perhaps, uh, author fire chiefs, author presidents, and eliminate vice presidents from that fire committee? Something to think about. My end. Thank you. Thank you.
So, uh, South River Fire Chief, Assistant Chief, actually, sorry. Um, my question is, what was the purpose for this to be changed? Who, boy, who started that? Who start, who brought this ordinance to be changed?
It was actually the fire committees came forward, and they wanted a little bit more control as far as the use of, well, first, you know, government property. South River property. Um, you know, there's things that have been left un. There's been a mess in the place, it hasn't been cleaned up.
Was it brought, was it brought to the existing fire committee's attention?
As far as I know, I'm not sure about that.
Because right now, I sit on the fire committee.
Okay.
On the, the old ordinance. Okay, so my question is, what is the purpose of changing? Because if, if there's a problem, it wasn't brought to our attention. There was one problem brought to our attention, we rectified it um, as a committee with the bu- the building managers. So I don't know why, like, what happened. Because the chiefs were never, the, the head chief and myself and Mr. Smith, were never, had, never had a discussion about changing anything. Um, so I was like, you know, I'd like to know why.
Basically to keep control of the building a little bit more.
What was out of control?
Um, guys just using their property and everything like that to doing things to their private vehicles and what have you.
Okay, so that, then, the problem here is the building managers weren't doing their job. Because if they didn't report it to the building committee, correct? Yes or no?
Well, that's, that's the whole idea.
No, it's a simple yes or no answer.
Yeah.
They, they didn't do their job, correct?
Yeah.
Because if it was, if there was a problem, it would have been brought to, we would have fit the, the issue. Okay, and I think there's gonna be a conflict of interest with being the, the, the vice, putting the vice presidents on there because Mr. Sayula is a vice president, and now he is coun- he's also a councilman. So is there, putting the vice presidents on there, it's gonna be an issue.
You could also abstain, too.
So then what's the purpose of putting the vice president? Yeah, I mean, everybody I've talked to, there, you know, like I said, there's, there's no reason why we have to, why we're changing the court here, so to speak. Okay, because, I mean, you're saying that there was issues that were never brought to the fire committee. Okay, because like I said, there was one issue that was brought to the fire committee, we handled it. And now you're telling me there's more issues, but then, all right, instead of changing ordinance, why, why aren't we rectifying the problem with the building managers then?
Keep a little bit more control on the situation.
What was out of control?
Guys using the facility for their own personal gain.
And it's. And again, why wasn't it brought to the attention of the fire committee? So what, my question for you was, if it's, whether it's the vice presidents, the presidents, the chiefs, or anything, it still can happen again. If they don't bring it to the attention of the committee, the committee can't do anything. So why are we, why do we need to change the committee? Maybe we should fix the problem with the fire, the building managers.
Well, that's the job of the committee because being, that we're not part of the group of the fire department itself, you have better control over your people, you know their mannerisms and their habits. So I would say it's, that, that, it's better handled internally. Just like with the police department, they have Department of Internal Affairs to handle anything they go to.
Okay, but my question is, my question is, who is, like, the chief of the department pretty much answers for everything, correct? Okay, but he's not on his, he's not part of this committee.
But the chiefs and the vice presidents would determine who's gonna be the building manager, right?
No, in that, right now, it's the presidents and the vice, and the presidents and the chiefs, all three chiefs.
Right.
You're taking the chiefs out of it and putting vice presidents in. I mean, if you wanna add the vice presidents, that, I, that's irrelevant, you know, that's fine. But why are you taking the chiefs out of it when the chiefs are the ones that have to answer for it? Because none of the presidents are here, none of the building committee is here, they don't give you the report, the report comes from the chief. And honestly, with the building committee, when I was chief last year, the building committee, the building managers came to me, and I went to Arty and vice versa, if they had a problem, we, right, Arthur? I mean, I don't understand the problem here. There was never, there's a, you know what I mean?
It's, it's more of a, it's more of a system of chain command, this way they can get lots more information to the, to the building.
But the chain of command is already there. You're actually taking the chain of command out because you're taking away from, away from the chiefs.
And it's restructuring it to get more information to the business administrator as far as equipment or anything else goes.
Okay. Anyone else from the public? First call. Second call. Motion by Councilwoman Ballas, seconded by Councilman DeZemian.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Council discussion. So I understand the situation you're in. So I was looking at what the police department is about. You look at, uh, buildings and grounds, there's one person that actually, or there's one agency that's only in, in charge of all of our buildings. That is the DBB. We do not like to get involved with the politics inside the fire department. Problem is, fire department belongs to the town, so does the fire trust. As a fire chief, you deal with your personality, you deal with what's actually out in the world of fires and, you know, whatever comes with that trouble right now. I understand where you're going, but we need it to be more of an administrative thing than anything else. I understand where you're, I understand where you're concerned.
How much more can you get administrative?
This is, this is the direction we're going, if it moves, so. That said, do I have a motion?
Motion.
So, motion by Councilwoman Ballas, seconded by Councilman Grchensky. What is your, uh?
Councilman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Seula?
Upstate.
Councilman DeSantis?
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Grchensky?
Yes.
Uh, we are going to be moving to twenty twenty-four forty-eight.
Ordinance twenty twenty-four forty-eight, ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River, so as to amend chapter two eighty-eight A entitled Special Events.
Mayor, make a motion, have you pulled this ordinance?
Mayor, we still, we still have to open it up.
No. You have to make a motion to, uh.
Motion away before we.
Okay.
Okay, motion, uh, by, uh, Councilwoman Valas, second by Councilman DeZemian.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are going to open it to the public, but before we do that, we are going to be pulling this ordinance to have it looked at for next year's, uh, agenda. So, it'll be, uh.
Stewina Data, one eighty nine Main Street. You happy you're pulling the ordinance? Uh, what are you going to look into?
Couple things on the, uh, probably you know when you bring it up.
We've been for nonprofit organizations.
I, one, I have to show you when we work it out.
I'd just love to know how many more popular organizations request parades in South River.
How's your answer when we pull it up?
Long-term research, I'd also like to know, at least for churches, how many times we've had to, um, ask for an officer to come in specifically for the parade to receive overtime.
For church?
None.
For church?
None.
Churches are the only ones asking for parades, guys. Are flag raisings? Yes, I know, nonprofit organizations requesting for a ten fifteen minute parade, yes, I know, it doesn't matter how long they come, if they come, they have to be paid. I just want you guys to realize what you're doing in trying to develop and make our community grow together. And if you're going to just keep putting barriers up for things not to happen in South River, they will.
Anyone else from the public? First call. Second call.
Motion to pull it public?
Motion by Councilman Seola, check it. Second by Councilman Krasinski.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What is your motion?
Motion to pull the ordinance.
So, you don't, you don't actually need to add a motion, huh?
No.
No.
Okay. Motion, guys. Alyssa, twenty twenty four forty nine, um, can you?
Uh, we still need to read it.
Orders twenty twenty four forty nine, the ordinance of the borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, adopting the amendments to sub area one fifty two of the Lower Main Street redevelopment plan.
Move away, over here.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Valas, second by Councilman Seola.
All in favor?
Aye.
Move up to the public.
Good evening, I'm Joe DiNata, thirty Daley Street here in South River. Um, I noticed, uh, of course, this one here is, they were adopting amendments. Was there ever an official proposal put in by the developer? Uh, basically what it is, according to the, uh, the master plan for, uh, this lot and then, uh, their request to make amendments and then second, submit after the amendments have been adopted.
Uh, so, Mr. Nata, currently what we're doing, and I, I think I might have seen you walk in a minute or two late. Um, we announced earlier that we are not going to be moving forward right now on this because there are still some, uh, things that we are trying to negotiate with the redeveloper at this time, so basically we have form of procedure, we have to open it up to the public. But there, I don't believe that there's going to be a motion to adopt. When, uh, if and when the redeveloper, uh, the borough come to some type of agreement, that's when this will, uh, clear back. Um, but as of right now, nothing is going to move forward.
So, nothing is beneficially submitted based on the, uh, the original, uh, master plan, sort of figure the, uh, of the redevelopment area?
So, I, I believe that the, a proposal was submitted by the redeveloper, um, but we are still in negotiations with that developer. So, a proposal was and the planner had put together the ordinance, but the redevelopment agreement has not been finalized yet. So, we cannot move forward with the ordinance or the redevelopment agreement just yet.
So, it was just, uh, it was just like a written document, no plans or anything of that nature?
I, I believe there are plans.
No plans.
I believe there are plans. I, I, in my office, I do not have the plans because I'm not the one that handles the redevelopment. Uh, another partner of mine does, but there were plans submitted, I believe, to her.
Okay, I haven't seen it. Is, is it appropriate for me to record a copy of that information, I know? I mean, the original supplemental, not the, um, not the amendments, I'm talking about the original supplemental that they're asking amendments from.
Uh, I'm not sure if they are a public document off the top of my head yet because we haven't finalized anything. But what I can do is I can look into that and I will get back to you either through Alyssa or I have your email address.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
That's not bad.
Anyone else, public? First call. Second call.
Motion to pull it public, second.
Motion by Councilman Seola, second by Councilman Krasinski.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What is your motion? Orders, guys. We're going to reports.
Bruce. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, good evening, everyone. Twenty twenty three local aid and twenty twenty four local aid program. Uh, contractors continuing to work on that project. The twenty twenty three local transportation projects grant, we are working on that design. The twenty twenty five local aid program, the borough received a notice from the New Jersey Department of Transportation that they received a five hundred and six thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollar grant. Uh, we'll be putting a proposal together for that. No change in the substation, they're still working on the reports which they will then submit to us. The New Jersey D E P stormwater assistance grant application, the borough have originally gotten, I believe, twenty five thousand dollars going in. I have double checked and there is no future funding from the D E P regarding that. But I'm not aware that they have rescinded the requirement to do this work. So, perhaps when you're crafting your budget, you can decide if there's someone you want to plug in for that to just creep along or something. And that is it, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anything for, uh, this? On the jump?
A couple annual resolutions we do. The first one is canceling balances less than ten dollars. Uh, next one is canceling old, still dated checks. Another resolution is purchasing through state contract during the year. We purchase through state contract, but it accumulates during the year over the bid threshold, so you do a resolution to immortalize it. Uh, we also have a resolution, purchasing a Dodge Durango. We originally purchased the vehicle early in the year from Wall Chevrolet, but Wall Chevrolet cannot provide us the vehicle, so we're receding that one and buying a Dodge Durango on the state contract. And the last one is we went out to bid for billing collection services at the borough and there's a resolution to reject the bid due to irregularities in the bid.
Anything for Joe?
That's it.
I have a question. I know that we are beyond, beyond, beyond the billing and the water and electricity, that, um, everybody got it. Problem I have is a lot of people are walking to Forty Year Washington screaming, which rightfully so, they have every right to do so. People calling, and I feel that we don't have like one person that's capable of handling just getting on the computer, dealing with customers, calling in, dealing with the customer that's sitting at the front window, helping them, uh, manage getting their bills until this gets resolved. The reason I'm saying this is even if we came to a, uh, an agreement today with whoever, transfer is going to be literally six months. So, we're still going to have an issue.
Yeah.
For quite some time. So, this is a thought I, you know, came up with. And let me know if it's something that we can work on, something that, I mean, maybe we can move on it next year.
I'd probably, we'll go on budget committee, maybe bring it up to them, put it in the budget.
Take the stress off before you go to Washington, take the stress off of them, please. Page.
Yes, sir. Uh, December, Wednesday, December twenty fifth and January first, we'll be closed for the holidays, there'll be no garbage collection. On them dates, the garbage will be picked up on December twenty seventh and January third, those are both Fridays, there'll be no bulk pickup for, on them Fridays. And also, as the temperatures are getting colder now, uh, we'll be going out there assaulting intersections, ice spots from some pumps. If we miss any, you could just call the D P W office and we'll hit them up. That's all I have.
Very good. Uh, chief?
Mayor, I don't have anything, but again, thank you for having that, uh, swear against Sarbonia note, he, he and his, uh, family appreciate, uh, that.
You know that we are having a rush of, uh, cars being broken into, lock your doors.
Lock your doors. Your key floss near your car.
Computer running.
Hold on, hold on. First assistant, chief? I have an important chief moment, thank you very much for this year. Thank you. Alyssa?
Nothing tonight.
Andrea?
Uh, Mayor, the only thing I have tonight is we are just reminding everybody we're pulling resolution three fifty two. That's the redevelopment strategy.
Mark?
Yeah, Mayor, just a couple things. The university, unidirectional flushing is completed, was very successful. Um, number three fifty seven on year resolution consents. In the annual power plus adjustment, as required by ordinance, I reviewed the, uh, purchasing up till the end of November twenty four with the CFO. Both of us, you know, worked very diligently to buy the electric on the grid and along with the battery storage project, we had a very successful year. So, my recommendation and this resolution is for no increase in our electric for twenty twenty five. Next thing is three sixty six. Uh, we're doing an agreement with Comcast Business, Comcast came in. And, um, with this agreement, they are going to run fiber optics into some of our buildings and they are going to increase the speed in our internet. And the cost differential is minimal, so, after talking to the CFO, we both agreed that it would be the best interest of the borough to do this, so, we'll be moving that. That's it.
Thank you. Councilman Seola?
The E D C had their first business get together with the business owners and the property owners. And they had it for like a little holiday get together. Um, our grant writer, Dawn McDonald, she met a lady down at the legal municipalities who's in charge of grants and low interest loans for small businesses. Uh, a lot of the business owners met with her at the get together and were very pleased with some of the information that she was giving out. So, it was a very successful night. Um, they want to try and do it again, maybe three times, but there was about forty people from the town there that were very, very happy about the information that was handed out to all the small businesses. So, we're going to keep going forward with that and try and get all the businesses to where they have to be. And with the redevelopment, they're all very excited about the foot traffic on Main Street. The increase they can do with their volume in their stores. So, they're very, very, very happy. So, that's all I have right now, Mayor, thank you.
Councilwoman Valas?
Yeah, the only thing I have is, uh, being it's the end of the year, our meetings are very well done. Just to continue to look at the South River Library website, they have, uh, uh, some upcoming events through the rest of the year. I know tomorrow they're building Jingle Bells houses, you can still sign up for them if you want, they give you all the supplies. But just give, you know, give them a look see and, uh, they have a lot of things for adults and children alike. And that's all I have.
Councilman DeZemian?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, the rec department is having a meeting tomorrow. December tenth at seven o'clock at fifty five Ree Street. South River residents are welcome to attend. They welcome your input on what to do as they discuss the upcoming renovations to Volunteers Park. Uh, congratulations to the new inductees to the South River High School National Honor Society. Approximately twenty recently, uh, were recently inducted at their ceremony. And also at that ceremony, the South River High School National Honor Society Ceremony, the board of Ed, Honored Ed Chick. Um, in nineteen seventy, South River High School grad, a lot of people know him. Uh, he, they inducted him into the South River High School Wall of Fame for his extraordinary career in law enforcement and his loyalty to South River sports over many years. Uh, coached to football and wrestling. Ed recently passed away earlier this year at a very young age. And, uh, he was touched by many people and he will be deeply missed by this community. And the trees that were ordered by the shade tree were recently planted throughout the town. Uh, a few weeks ago, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Krasinski?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the Office on Aging will be closed this Friday for their, uh, big annual Christmas festival. Um, hopefully, if you planned on attending, you had signed up at the beginning of the month. Uh, the office will also be closed Christmas Eve and Christmas Day. And, uh, they'll close early on the thirty first. Aside from that, like I said before, if you plan any events with the Office on Aging and everything and you check your calendar, please sign up at the beginning of the month so they can actually reserve a space for you. With that, that's all I have right now, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman DeSantis? No, thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I will open it up to the public, you have ten minutes, uh, to speak. Say your name and your address.
Okay. Uh, I need to go there or no?
Yeah.
You can, yeah, please. Well, with the, do you mean? Do you need to have me on? Hi, how are you? Um, what's your name and address?
My name is Alison Rocha and I'm a four, four ten Old Bridge, all right? South River, of course. And, uh, we're here, uh, here, uh, me and my neighbor, um, we were talking about him, uh, selling this semi-lap van and obtaining the pre-prob.
Alright, you would have to go to your, go to Julie Moore, you would give me an application to something like the property.
Okay, talking about the township, right, that's the forty eight Washington, okay. That's how, that's the starting point, right, that's the starting, okay, thank you, that's it, thank you.
Anyone else from the public?
No, no, they're all. Okay.
We didn't need to have Joe DiNata, thirty, uh, Daley Street here in South River. Uh, two things on the county level, I wish I had good news, but unfortunately, no. Um, I've been in touch with, uh, as, uh, I guess, Mark knows. Um, I've been in touch with, uh, JCP and L about the lighting. Apparently, they don't want to talk to me either. And, um, and since my office has designated me the person to all the complaints go to, uh, I'm going to keep on until they get something. If they don't want to talk to me by phone, they don't want to talk to me by email, but I'm, I'm sorry, I'm too bothered, please, I'm doing it. Um, Main Street, it's back in the state's hands for its final approval before we do anything about the, uh, folly tracks and then redoing Main Street. So, that is, is moving forward, but entirely too slow as far as I'm concerned. Uh, but it is what it is. Uh, anyway, thank you for the, now, for all the county staff. Thank you for, uh, the, um, don't, don't increase my utility bill. I wish they, I wish everything gets straightened out with the billing itself, and believe me, I know, we get complaints from the public, they won't, they want to pay their bills. Wow, that's something. Uh, but, uh, yes, um, I, I have, uh, I feel for you. Unfortunately, that's not, not the way it always goes. And, uh, the, uh, the only thing that I would, I would suggest, and I've suggested it before, we have two projects. One is for the water main replacement, which we had a presentation a few meetings back, which was very nice, but have we made any progress since then? I mean, we asked, uh, I'm, I'm sure we paid them some kind of, uh, funds for the time that they put into the presentation. Where has it gone from that point?
We had a kickoff meeting last week and discussed what our next steps in the project were and we are getting the application ready to go to the I M A.
Yeah, it would be nice if we had some, like, something that we're going to keep the, uh, the residence advisor, you know, if we are moving forward, because you don't hear anything. I'm going by myself, I, I, I feel that we're not really doing anything, so a little something in the, say, monthly would be nice. Um, and the other thing is the, uh, C M A's project with finding a. And the other thing is the CME's project with finding a suitable location for the recreation, recreation building. How would we, how would we stand with that?
We did the initial review from the environmental, actually, pardon me. We did the environmental review. We sent over, I think, three possible floor plans from the architect. So we did what I believe we were contracted to do under that authorization. And I'm not sure if the boroughs, what the, you know, what the boroughs wants to do from that point of thought.
Again, if we can have something, we're running a brief, uh, progress being made. It helps the general public know that these things are moving forward. Not just mention one time. And if they keep doing that about it, all of a sudden, they don't hear anything about it after that. Especially when you're submitting a check to the firms. What did we, what did they do to warrant the check? So something, doesn't have to be really important, just so that people know what's going on. And a poor issue, Mayor, you came out very strongly about solving those issues. And since I believe the council is on the same page as you are, there should be no, no difficulty in moving ahead forward. So let the public know so we know what's going on. Again, I emphasize that it's the public's problem, especially the areas that may be in the most need. We do have areas in South River and from the reports that even posted on the website, we may have environmental issues. They should really know about that because once you start opening up holes, if you've got contaminated materials in there, that's a big thing. So getting the people involved in advance. And I don't, didn't hear anything about any type of study done in the presentation, but I assume something would be done.
For the what? For the, for the water main?
One of the, one of the things, Mayor, in the kickoff meeting is that the CEM Smith is mobilizing their people to start doing the environmental testing. They're going to have to do some test pits. They're going to have to narrow down exactly where we're starting. Because that's part of the submission to the IBank. They'll want all that information. And we've done our due diligence up to that point. So in the next year, the weather now may be an issue with the cold. But as soon as they get their troops together, they're going to start doing some test pits.
You have to excuse me when I bring these things up. I'm one of those type of people, I don't know something, so therefore I ain't. But these things would have to be looked at and addressed and let the people know what's going on because should something happen that's become, becomes a problem, at least the people will know that this is what we're looking into and for their safety as well as for budgetary purposes, the town is on top of it. So that's why I bring it up. Now do this again and again as time goes by. Okay, thank you very much.
Anyone else from the public?
I have Frasier Byrne, 11 to set place. So regarding the, the lights on the, it's actually the causeway that approaches the bridge. The, the source of the issue is that this little white part here is actually the borough of Sayerville. And because the original boundary follows the course of the South River, which was filled in when they built the, the new bridge, the Veterans Bridge. So since it's Borough of Sayerville, that falls under the service area of JCPNL. And we're relying on these other agencies to fix this for us. Now, I have a solution that would fix this permanently, would put the hands of fixing the problem in the hands of Mr. Landenski there. We could, we could go to our 18th district legislators and ask them to introduce a bill. And ironically, the, the two parcels on either side of Main Street are actually owned by the Borough of South River in Borough of Sayerville's jurisdiction. So we actually own this property already. We could ask the legislators to pass a bill that would annex these two parcels and the County Road 535 right away into the Borough of South River. Once that passed through the legislature, then it would be the Borough of South River and it would fall under the, the power jurisdiction of the South River Electric Authority. Then you could send people out, our people out, and replace all those lights with our lights and put it on our power. And, but, yeah.
You're, you're asking me to do something that Sayerville wants, Sayerville's supposed to pay for.
Right.
You're asking us to pay for it, the taxpayers of South River. Because the battery line of Sayerville comes right up to the last of property.
Indeed, it does.
Right.
This is the original book. So I'm saying, do we want to fix it properly forever and never have to rely on any of these other people to fix it? This would be the way to do it. We're going to take that piece of property from Borough of Sayerville and we're going to take ownership of it. And then we, we can fix it right, right? It's a harebrained scheme, but it would fix the problem, right? It would be our jurisdiction now. And yes, we would have to bear the cost of repairing these things. But it would be done right because we have confidence in Mr. Landenski and, and Mr. Sarvis and our entire electric utility to get the job done right most of the time. Except when squirrels.
What I will do within, in the budget committee for next year on their harebrained suggestion, I will, that's why I don't. There we go.
Do more in the budget.
Anyone else from the public? Who's called?
No. Sorry. Lisa Byrne. I'm not going to talk about that. Hello, to set place. I just wanted to add as a water main member and a wall theme committee person that Mr. DeZima, thank you for making that announcement. But Mr. Anthony Rosano was also one of our honorees. He's an active member. Many, many people know him. He's been here forever. So I just did want to give him a sign up. Acknowledge him as a student as well. Thank you.
Anyone?
Julie Mayda, 189 Main Street. Thank you, Mr. Landenski, for speaking on the signing agreement with Comcast. I did see that on the business. However, Mr. Mayor, you did say that Verizon was looking to come into South River.
Yeah, they put our name on the list for, uh, files to come in, probably sometime in the end of next year.
Does that change now that we made an agreement again with Comcast?
This is just your business.
It's just for the municipality.
Not for the town.
Just for the municipal.
Okay.
Maybe you'll be, you'll have the option to do what you like to do.
And being on the list for Verizon, they can turn you down and they've got a list that's, I don't know.
Thank you, Lisa, for speaking about, uh, former councilman Tony Rosano, who's also on the wall theme. I know after he passed, a lot of people were hoping that he would be recognized. And I'm glad that his son and his grandson were able to be there and accept that award for him. The rec building. So, um, if you could tell us, Bruce, when did you do that plan for the board?
Several months ago, but I don't recall the date.
Several months ago? We already had some sort of plan for the rec building that we ran on. We were going to get that rec building for the rec department. But, um, one thing I wanted to say about the rec department in the last three years, the amount that has grown. I know Mr. DeSantis, or Councilman DeSantis can also go to that. Mr. Zenga, how much would you say the rec department has expanded in the last three years in money for the programs that come?
Most of it's in the trust fund. So they have done the cheer program and other stuff. But most of it comes from fees that come in and they pay for expenses that go out. So they wash almost.
I understand that the program washes itself. We, us parents, we pay our part for our kids to have the program. But it has grown immensely in town.
I agree.
Over fifty thousand a year just in cheer programs, correct?
Cheer is probably not a large program, yes.
You are just a program. And I also want to mention we will be competing this weekend in Philadelphia. So good luck to all our full year teams that'll be out there. But the conversation came about because our program has been growing and these kids need a place to go to every day. You know, we complain that the kids are out there and they're causing problems in parks and doing things they shouldn't. And a rec facility would really help in something like that. I help coach cheer. Our schedule is four days a week, okay? We are fortunate enough to be able to use the primary school for cheer. But, you know, the school programs come first. Wrestling, they use the facilities too, but I don't know how many home games they can have because of not being able to have the facility because school programs come first. We put a hundred thousand dollars in the budget this year, right? To start our rec building and that was going to be a project we have here. Who, who's on the budget committee? Who's on the budget committee? Just Mr. Councilman DeZima? Mr. Crandall? Okay, so. Next year, we'll have a group of people, new people, and I'm sure we already have an idea of what it's going to cost. Are we prepared for something like that? Or is it just gonna?
That's the big issue with the cost. But the cost keeps on getting higher and higher, up until the four and five million dollar range. We have to find that, the borough's ability to be able to fund it. We are looking at a couple other options that might be less. But at this time, it'll go in front of the budget committee to, you know, we're limited to what we can do with our capital projects. We can only do so much. There's priorities, right? That's one of our priorities. But there are other priorities such as roads and infrastructure also. We can only spend so much.
I know we're going to say it's a priority, but out of a hundred thousand dollars, we only spent sixteen thousand. But I don't think it was really a priority. It was just something we kind of said, you know, get people to come out and make sure they got their rec building. I'm just bringing it out, you know, it's lovely here. I know you guys all like seeing me at every meeting, so.
I find it entertaining.
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to make a comment. So obviously, I agree with everything you said. Being involved in the corner with football, wrestling, all the youth sports, the facilities in the town are not even anywhere near what most towns have. So as far as being leading edge, everyone understands that may not be something that we're going to do in South River. But we can't be so far behind. Sharing buildings, splitting time, requests, maybes, we need a home. I can tell you that, now that I'm involved up here, I was going to break, make this comment at the end of my final comments, but the youth in this town is my first priority. It's before anything else. So we talk about we have priorities. As Councilman Mathisand is sitting up here, it's my first priority. It's something I've been involved with long before I had children. My children are involved now and I'll be long involved with after. So I share everything you said and I will make sure that I do everything in my power to keep it at the forefront of all of what we talk about. You need facilities. I'll give an example of a joke that I tell. I go to wrestle somewhere and they say, you're wrestling in gym number three. And I say, oh, in South River, gym number three is Monde de Park. Because we don't even have a third gym, like in our whole, all, the whole system. It's funny, but it's not. So there, we have to get creative. We don't just get to put up big shiny buildings. This is not how it works. The rec center at Scataway, Monroe, is just a different animal. But it will be looked at and tackled and I promise you and everyone listening that it's a priority for me. It's the first priority.
If you want volunteers, the parents that volunteer in this community are the most aggressive, most outgoing, most will take off their shirt for any kid out there if you need volunteers. And I'm sure it's not just with their kids. It's with programs and things in town. You just have to ask. And you say Monroe, Monroe is now fighting for their own cheer gym. Just cheer. Let's think about how many programs they have. Their cheer program is amazing. But, you know, we start off small. I would say we, we're one of the cheapest programs out there and we're, over fifty thousand dollars comes in a year for a cheer program. So I just wanted to mention that. And, um, my last comment will be that I saw this week that, and I know we're not East Brunswick, but East Brunswick came out with their own press release. I don't know if you guys follow East Brunswick, a township of East Brunswick on Facebook. Their redevelopment agency recently recommended that the council consider designation of the entire Brunswick Square and Mall area as a need of redevelopment. And I'm not going to read the whole thing, but they go on to express the process that the redevelopment agency will be doing. When redevelopment, going to the council, going to the planning board, going back to redevelopment, going back to the big developers. This is transparency, in my opinion. We have a redevelopment agency, which is you guys. We have yet to see anything that's come before the redevelopment agency, which is you guys. Now you're getting rid of the planning and zoning board for a land use board? Like where is the transparency going to come with what's going on in town? We want to be great, I know. But I would recommend you go and read how they, you know, put everything and what the process is going to be and how it's going to go. And it's going to take months and it's not going to be quick and easy, but people get to know what's going on. So I'd like for you guys, if you have a chance, go and look at that. That's all I have.
Anyone else from the public? First of all. Second of all.
Both public.
Second. Motion by Councilman Seola, seconded by Councilman Krasinski.
One favor.
No, 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 wait a minute. Let's like consent resolutions.
For as resolution 202401 authorizes the Borough Council to utilize a consent agenda to adopt various resolutions of a routine and non-controversial nature at one time. Now therefore being hereby resolved, that the rule list of resolutions are hereby adopted by the Borough Council in whole as it's the same when individually acted upon. Consent resolutions 2024-353 to 2024-367. 353, authorizing the requisition of funds for payment to the custodian of the school monies. 354, authorizing conditional appointment of Michael McHenry as police officer. 355, resolution authorizing the carryover buyback. 356, authorizing the cancellation of all balances less than ten dollars. 357, authorizing no annual power cost adjustments for 2025. 358, cancellation of outdated stale items. 359, authorizing purchases and emergency repairs through state contracts. 360, authorizing the purchase of radio dispatch furniture for the police department. 361, authorizing the purchase of a Dodge Durango for the retirement public works. 362, authorized for utility refunds. 363, resolution rejecting bids for utility bidding services and authorizing a rebid. 364, except November 18, 2024 regular meeting minutes. 365, authorize the building claims list. 366, authorizing an agreement with Comcast Business. 367, authorizing CME to provide engineering services for Volunteers Park.
What is your motion?
What is the resolution?
Motion, motion by Councilwoman Valles, I'd like Councilman DeZima.
Councilwoman Valles?
Yes.
Councilman Seola?
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis?
Yes.
Councilman DeZima?
Yes.
Councilman Krasinski?
Yes, with ex, I'd like to extend some resolution 365, number 24 dash 0331. Yes.
And we're going to go to council comments. Councilman DeZima?
So I just want to thank everybody for the opportunity that I have. I was appointed in August and as I'm going through the process here, it is a learning process. So you sit up here, you listen and you learn and I'm trying to do my best at that. So I'm going to continue to, to progress this town forward. I already made a comment about, you know, the investment in the youth of this town. And my pledge, or, you know, my term is to really continue to do that. I think that the youth and the facilities they have and the programs they're offered, it's a huge part of, of their, of their upbringing. Athletics and other programs are wholesome. It's how I grew up. I was raised in this exact town and these exact schools and programs. So it's important to me. And I guess I'll say I feel like I turned out all right, so you can have your own opinion on that. But again, I'm grateful for the opportunity to serve the borough. I look forward to, you know, my actual elected term and I'm going to do my best for everybody. And just want to whichever. And just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Hanukkah, and all holidays. I don't want to leave any out, but I just want to tell everybody, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Gerchinsky?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank all of our public service workers, our police department, fire department, uh, DPW, Rappelwood Johnson, um, especially the police department for some of the actions that they've done lately, um, with the Veterans Day ceremony and the, uh, Pearl Harbor Day ceremony. Aside from that, I'd just like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas also, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, and a healthy and happy New Year. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman DeZan?
Um, along with what Matt said, uh, I'm also South River Dad, and play basketball across country, marching there. So my heart also goes out to all of you. And I have mentioned to the mayor many times, over the development of the rec center, what, what can we possibly do, and of course, it's the budget. Um, but it's, it's always thought of, and we're gonna move forward on it. Um, happy holidays to everybody. Next time we meet, we'll be on New Year, so, uh, everybody enjoy the holidays. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ballas?
Yeah, first, I'd like to congratulate our new police officer, and hope he stays around a long time, like he said, till he's fifty-six. In reference to the rec, my recreation was spent in the summer at Finsy's Field. We didn't have inside all the time. I enjoyed every minute of it, but again, the kids need a place to go. There's no doubt in my mind, they needed a place to go. We've grown immensely in the last few years, so whatever we need to look into to do something for our rec program, I, I'm all for it. So that's my opinion. Um, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa. We'll see everybody on January first, and I wish everybody a good rest of the year. Looking forward to twenty twenty-five. And that's all I have.
Councilman Seola?
Thank you. Well, again, just to, uh, welcome our new police officer, and I'd like to wish everybody Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Holidays, and a Happy and Safe New Year.
Thank you.
So this has been a very, very interesting year. First year out as a mayor, having a great time working with the whole entire council, along with all the professionals. We started off the year on the interesting note where a road entity decided to take out the electricity. We got it up, up and running within literally almost thirty to forty-five minutes. But since then, film industry has come into your town, with South River on it. What does that mean? Although they shot American horror stories, now South River will always be recognized in the film industry when it comes down to its backdrop, for any of their movies, films, uh, film clips, whatever they did. When you don't know, when they came, they spent approximately, not up to the exact quarter, but they spent approximately about seven hundred fifty thousand in your town home. That's a month, the usage of police, DPW, parking lots, renting of, um, Eckler Halls, delis. This is what they have to do. So they brought the revenue to your town. And I've been going to several of their meetings throughout the whole entire state, being recognized as one of our towns. But it doesn't stop there. Since then, we have replaced, paved, Monterey Avenue, Borough Street, Daley Street, Dallow Street, and John Street. We have quite a few more to come. Lot more road projects for next year. That doesn't stop. Let's talk about the parks. New playground, Daley's Park, basketball court, remarkable, it's so packed. We have to have policing vibes there more than normal, just to make sure everybody's okay. We even put up a netting soccer goal at Daley's Park. What that is, is a net, so every time they shoot the ball, it doesn't go over, but it gets caught. We even did a, we even got an exclusive playground at Grokowski Park, funded by five hundred fifty-four thousand dollars by Greenacre, uh, grant, plus the seventy-nine hundred, seventy-nine thousand dollars from DCA grant. Good job on Dawn, and good job on administration. The borough is funding approximately about a hundred and five to actually help the rest of that Grokowski Park, which is gonna take place next year. It doesn't stop there. In the year of two twenty twenty-four, this year, obviously, in grants, we pulled in two million four hundred seventy-one dollars, seventy-four, seven hundred forty-one dollars. Water and sewer and drainage improvements, including fire hydrants, were done, close to about two million dollars. The chemicals project, you know, you know, directional flushment was done, to help with the groundwater issue. I want to say it stops there, it doesn't. I even helped, well, I'm not gonna say it was only me, but we even went as far as having a, hopefully secure twenty million dollars towards our water infrastructure that's gonna come to South River with the water lines and the mains. Phase two of the battery project was authorized, and it's gonna be online by the summer of twenty twenty-five. We actually got a fire truck, and quite a few DPW, uh, vehicles. Water meter project in progress, it's gonna be up and running, it's gonna be similar to what you see with the electric. We even got two redevelopment projects, which was something that I ran on, and administration helped move it forward. A lot was done, although a lot of people say, I just think it was just a scratch on the surface in what's coming to South River. It's not easy to make things happen, especially when it comes down to today's economy. It's not easy to work with crossing, uh, uh, party lines, but I have been doing that. I realize working the party lines will help this town move forward. Everybody wants the same thing in this town. So yes, is the, the concept of a rec center still coming? It's definitely coming, a hundred percent. So everybody can sit there and they can frown, they can smile, they can downplay the whole entire thing, but in one year, I think that scratch is gonna go a long way. With that, I want to wish everybody a merry well. Actually, before I say that, I also want to thank, uh, Councilman, or Council President Krenzel for his time with us. I know he hasn't been here in the last ten, past two meetings, but today would have been his last meeting. Um, we have a lot of work ahead of us, uh, Council, Councilwoman elect, uh, Nick Chinacoplis. Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and have a dream.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Motion by Councilman Seola, second by Councilman DeZan.
One favor?